Okay, it's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and call to order the December 7th meeting of the Brandon City Council, and we'll open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands in one nation, in one land, united as one.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. Roll call, Christina.
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Parliament.
Here.
Mayor Lambert.
Here. Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Uh huh.
Motion is second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, or Christina? I'd have a roll call with.
Yep. Clark.
Hi.
David, oh, sorry, Fish, Jorgensen.
Yes.
Jorgensen.
Hi.
Cole.
Hi.
Parliament.
Hi.
Very good. We have two sets of minutes from November 12th and November 15th. If I got a motion approved as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, but I'd like in the set of minutes to have piles last made from the boiling point added. I don't know what pile it is. It's on page eight of those set of minutes. Yeah, we just got piled there, so.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, there's a motion is second to approve the minutes as amended. Christina.
Clark.
Hi.
Fish.
Hi.
Jorgensen.
Hi.
Cole.
Hi.
Parliament.
Hi.
Motion carries. We have bills and claims submitted with the agenda in the amount of $1,239,650.19. Entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion is second to approve the bills and claims as submitted with the agenda. Any If not, Christina.
Clark.
Hi.
Fish.
Hi.
Jorgensen.
Hi.
Cole.
Hi.
Parliament.
Second.
Very good. Motion carries. We're at the point of our agenda that we accept community input. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so at this time. Yes, sir, in the back. We just asked that you go to the, yeah, go to the microphone, state your name and address. And we do limit each individual to five minutes.
Do you need one? Yep.
Yeah, Jeff Thue, just resident of Brandon here. Throughout this whole pandemic, there's a lot of businesses that are struggling, a lot of people that are struggling, and everybody knows that if you're over 65, you've got a different set of concerns than if you're younger than 65. This comes down a lot to personal choice. We've got two 50-year-old people in this community that's got cancer. They can't do anything about it. I could get hit by some kid texting on the way home. I can't do anything about it. Everybody's seen the graphs of South Dakota's little wave here that we've had on the way up, getting the cases up. Same thing with Minnehaw County printed right here. But we have not had a mask mandate in the state. You look at California, they've had mask mandates, massive lockdowns, commie California, and they've got the same graph spike that we have. There's a study a guy did of states with a mask mandate and states without a mask mandate. States with no mask mandates, their cases are going down. And if you look at the 14-day trend of Sioux Falls and Minnehaw County, our cases are going down. Colorado, Utah, and Mexico, all of them have mask mandates, same spike as Sioux Falls, South Dakota, whatever you want to call it. Illinois, New Jersey, California, Florida, the only one that removed their restrictions has the lowest case count. West Virginia, mask mandate July 6th, massive spike. Pennsylvania, everybody knows what they've done to their state there, same spike. California again, sorry about that. Colorado, they've had intense lockdowns, mask mandates since this began, same spike. And then Michigan, they've had intense lockdowns, locked down the whole state, practically going bankrupt. They've had mask mandates since the beginning and the same spike as everywhere else. I don't know that you can say, anybody can say for definitive fact that these work. And I think this all comes down to personal choice and personal responsibility. And I talked to another business owner, tell him I couldn't be here today. He deals with the public every day. He's in a room with walk-in customers every day. Seventy-five percent of his customers come in, don't wear a mask. He's had no cases in his clinic. So I just, I don't, I think these mandates are a lot of, make me feel good, and I see Mr. Savage from Argus Leaders on here. And I suppose if Brandon doesn't pass it, somebody's going to get a nasty grab from the Argus Leader in the paper, so, or on Kelland News or whatever else, so. Anyway, that's all I got, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, in the front row.
Okay, Marcel Toma, and I'm not wearing a mask for a medical condition, which is one reason I oppose the blanket mandates. I moved to Brandon in October from Madison, Dane County, Wisconsin. We've all heard of Madison, Wisconsin, I'm sure. They've had mandates, or I should read this so I don't get off. Yesterday, I spoke with a friend in Madison, just how so happens, and she was telling me that COVID is rampant in the area. Wisconsin has even had to open a temporary hospital facility near Milwaukee to handle extra patients. This despite having mask mandates and closing of schools, churches, libraries, and businesses for the last six months. Common sense tells us masks should stop the virus. But the reality seems to be there's no difference, as the previous man just mentioned, and maybe even a greater transmission rates with masks. And you wonder why. So, and I asked, you know, why would that be? Well, I wondered, do masks promote a lax attitude in hand washing? You wear a mask, okay, I don't have to wash my hands so much. Do masks promote more hand-to-face touching? Absolutely. And what I worry about a little is, do ill persons feel secure going out in public when they're wearing a mask? Because they think they're protecting the public. Now, we know now that vaccines are in the mail, so to speak, so I think, so healthcare, I think healthcare providers can expect them probably by the end of the year already. So I think you should wait, just hold off on any kind of mandate. And in conclusion, I don't envy your situation. You guys are kind of between a rock and a hard place. But I think the right decision may be to make no decision on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcel Toma, M.A.R.C.D.L., T.H. Shore.
Anyone else wish to address the council? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Dan McEwen. I live at 913 South Parkview Boulevard in Brandon. And we've lived here for 15 years. Thank you very much for considering a mask mandate. I want to tell you why I hope you will support a mask mandate in Brandon. I understand those who resist what they consider infringements on their personal liberties. None of us like to be told what to do. However, as a healthcare employee, I know how easily this disease can spread unless basic precautions are taken. I know how deadly this virus can be. I know that the best thing you can do to protect our community and keep our economy open is to mandate masks. Here's how it works. Masks have been proven by scientific studies to lower the transmission of COVID-19. Masks keep 80% of the droplets that carry the virus from getting to someone else. That's a scientific study. That means that when we wear masks, we protect our neighbors and we protect ourselves. In fact, one CDC study shows that those who wear masks in high-risk situations may reduce their risk of getting sick by as much as 70%. When we don't wear masks, COVID-19 transmits more freely. Each time our case counts rise, hospitalizations rise, and then our healthcare systems are forced to make terrible choices about how to best care for everyone. Scientific studies show that communities that mandate masks are much more successful in mitigating the transmission of COVID-19. I respectfully disagree with the other two gentlemen. For example, the state of Kansas passed a mask mandate in July. The CDC compared one county that followed the mask mandate and one county that opted out. The county that followed the mask mandate saw a 6% drop in new cases and a drop in death rates. The county that did not mandate masks saw a 100% increase in new cases and a rise in death rates. It is important to think about these numbers as people. Some of these people who contracted COVID-19 died. These are people with families, friends, jobs, and dreams, and they're people who are no longer part of this world. Besides the science, predictive analytics show that mask mandates can help keep businesses and schools open. An economic analysis using U.S. data found that increasing universal masking by 15% in the U.S. could prevent the need for lockdowns and reduce associated losses of up to $1 trillion. Brandon could be part of that effort. We could help prevent a shutdown aimed at mitigating the spread. We could also protect our workers who make businesses successful. Business owners tell me that they are afraid to require masking for fear of alienating their customers, but feel a mask mandate could help keep their workers from getting sick. A mask mandate could also keep our schools open. It could mean that we could protect our kids and keep them learning in school where they learn best. A mask mandate would protect our teachers and faculty who put their lives on the line every day they walk into school. A third reason to support a mask mandate is to support your healthcare workers. Our doctors and nurses see mask mandates as a gesture of support by individuals and communities standing with them in solidarity against COVID-19. Both healthcare systems have now come out in favor of masking mandates. Our State Medical Association, comprised of our doctors, supports a mask mandate. These are the people and the organizations that we depend on to care for us when we are sick and injured. We listen to them when they tell us how to care for a sore throat and how to take care of a broken bone. Why wouldn't we listen to them when they educate us about how to keep our community healthy? The most important reason to require masks is very simple: you can save lives. It is the right thing to do. You are our leaders, and sometimes elected leaders have to make difficult and unpopular decisions, especially when we are not all doing everything we can to protect each other. There are many examples of these difficult government decisions that are now widely accepted: banning drunk driving, requiring child immunizations, banning smoking in public places, and even instituting a speed limit. These laws were controversial when they were passed, but our elected officials knew they were the only way to protect our communities. We elected you because we trust you to do the right thing. Masking has been heavily politicized, and it has even become a symbol of the pandemic. We want it to be over. We all want it to be over. But look around, in the store, in school, or at a community event, you can see that the only way to make sure everyone is wearing a mask is to require it. A mask mandate could save your children or your grandchildren from this terrible sickness. It could save your parents or your grandparents, and it could save you. So please, do your part to protect the health of this community and vote in support of mandating masks in Brandon. I know it is not an easy decision, but it all comes down to one question for each of you: if you had an opportunity to save a life, would you? Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Others? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Joy Howe, 1117 East Ash Street. On November 17, the now former CEO of Sanford stated that there was no crises. And I'm wondering what changed? What happened in the last couple of weeks that created a crises? That you're now considering telling people they should wear a mask? You govern by the power of we, the people. And we can only give you the power that we already have. And if we don't have the power to do something, you don't have the power to do it either. Let me, let me give you a couple of examples. If I cannot steal my neighbor's property, I cannot give you the power to steal my neighbor's property. If I cannot stop my neighbor from going to church on Sunday, you cannot stop my neighbor from going to church on Sunday. If I cannot force my neighbor to wear a mask, I cannot give you the power to force my neighbor to wear a mask, regardless of whether you think you need to. You do not have any lawmaking authority. Only the legislature in peer can make a law. You can pass your resolutions, your ordinances, your mandates, has no force of law. Does not need to be followed, because you don't have the authority to do that. And I just want to say that we need to get over this COVID coma and stop this mask nonsense, because there's no science to support wearing a mask. And let the people live their lives without having to come down here and police our representatives who want to mess with our lives. Just leave us alone, because you don't have the authority to do what you're talking about doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
I have this request.
Jack has one from email. I'll go ahead and read it, Jack, if that's what it is.
Yep. Okay, I have a email one, and the lady asked me to read this on her behalf because she was unable to attend. And I'm just going to read this, her name, and everything is in here. My name is Amy Kelly, K-E-L-L-E-Y. I'm a physician in Sioux Falls. My children attend Brandon schools, and myself am a Brandon grad. And I'm here to talk about why Brandon should pass a mask mandate. First, I'd like to talk about the threat of COVID, then common myths and misinformation about masks, and then the data that shows masks work. Firstly, COVID-19 has killed 281,000 people in the U.S., 1,100 in our state alone. We have the highest death rate in the country, three per 100,000. North Dakota is second with one and a half per 1,000. Those are from this past Sunday. Most of these deaths were in November. This is getting worse and not better. We are literally one of the worst places in the world right now. One day last week, South Dakota reported the same number of cases as in Punjab, India. Their population is 25 million. South Dakota has a population of about 890,000. Additionally, Sioux Falls and the surrounding areas hit especially hard because we have the care centers in a three-to-four hour radius. I'm paraphrasing a bit here to, for brevity's sake. Our next nearest location is Denver. We take care of our region, not just the city. We need the hospital staff to stay healthy. We're getting, they are not getting COVID at work. They are getting it in the community. Now, the mask myths. One thing you see on the internet, internet, excuse me, is the oxygen can't get in and CO2 can't get out of your mask. And, oh, and the virus can pass through, so it doesn't work anyway. Both of these things cannot be true. That's like asking a T-Rex to fit through a door, but your kitten can't. If a virus, which is made of thousands of molecules, can pass through a mask that a simple molecule like oxygen or CO2 certainly can. Masks are also safe and don't increase other infections. The germs on the mask are your germs, and if you wash them regularly, you are fine. Do they work? Yes, there's clear evidence that they do. There are too many studies to discuss here. But a recent one released just before Thanksgiving compared masks in Kansas with mask mandates and those without it. I think that's the same study that Ms. Kelly referenced. Minnesota has a mask mandate, and they have 5.6 million people, and they've had a similar number of daily deaths this week as South Dakota, despite having five times more people. Go through the home. Brookings has had a mask mandate since August, and out of the 10 most populous counties in the state, Brookings has the lowest rate. Requiring masks is no different than speed limits, requiring seat belts are prohibiting driving under the influence. These are laws that are in place to protect people from harm. Mask requirements are the same. Insisting on your rights without acknowledging your responsibility isn't freedom. It's the definition of childish and adolescent behavior. Lastly, as a physician, I have lost patients every time I replayed everything in my head, wondering if I could have done something different to save them. I don't want you to wonder the same thing if your neighbor dies of COVID.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone? The actual agenda item will be for the city council to discuss, so if you have concerns or questions right now, I encourage you to bring them forth right now. Hearing none, we'll continue forward with our agenda. We have a first reading of ordinance 617, amending the Brandon City zoning ordinance concerning the use of uses in non-standard lots, merger of simultaneously improved lots. Brian, can you just give us a quick summary of that? Sounds like, well, go ahead.
City currently requires under section 1563 that any parcel that is two separate parcels under one ownership must be consolidated into one parcel prior to a building being issued. This amendment would change that to still require the same thing unless the improvement is a fence. So the construction of a fence would not require the replating of the two parcels into one lot.
Very good. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 617. Motion is second to approve first reading of ordinance number 617. Any questions, comments from the council? Hearing none. Christina, call the roll.
Clark.
Hi.
Fish.
Hi.
Jorgensen.
Hi.
Cole.
Hi.
Parliament.
Hi.
Motion passes. Next, we have the first reading of ordinance 618. Brian, once again, give me a quick summary.
Sure. This clears up a little bit of ambiguity in our existing zoning code. It removes fences from the definition of an accessory structure for zoning issues. Planning and zoning recommended to do pass.
Okay. With that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 618 as presented.
Allo.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the first reading of ordinance 618. Any questions, comments from the council? Hearing none. Christina.
Clark.
Hi.
Fish.
Hi.
Jorgensen.
Hi.
Cole.
Hi.
Parliament.
Hi.
First reading of ordinance 619 is next, concerns swimming pools. Brian?
There's a conflict between our current zoning code and the international swimming pool and spa code. Our zoning code is more restrictive, so we've adopted the swimming pool and spa code, but this would carve out section four of 303.2.1 of that code. As like I said, our zoning code is more stringent. Again, planning and zoning held public care notice and issued a do-pass recommendation.
I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance 619 as presented.
Second.
Motion is second to approve ordinance 619. Any questions, comments?
What was the catalyst for this particular ordinance? I read through the international swimming pool and spa code, and I think I also found it in the, the big book of code, you know, international code type of deal, and it said that the, a pool of 48 inches or more, the wall of the pool could serve as, as the barrier. And...
And I can speak to that. This is Lisa Mar...
It's not on.
This is Lisa Mar, so I can speak to that. Paul Clark had an inquiry about whether an above-ground pool needed a fence on the outside of the pool or not, and there was an evaluation under the international code versus our code, and it got very confusing and not defined well. Paul's recommendation was to do exactly what it is that he wants to do in here that was passed by planning and zoning, so that you would have a separate fence. The second part of that is that if you have a cover, one of those electronic covers that cover your in-ground pool, that you still would need to have a fence around the property because the international code would not specify that, and we specify, we want one, so that if you had the in-ground cover open, there is a fence that is still going around in the event the property owner fails to shut that pool and otherwise attend it. So Paul Clark was requesting these changes when he was looking at the two of them.
Okay, so this is Paul's opinion on going against the international swimming pool? I mean, because it, my understanding is that in Sioux Falls, with above-ground pools that are 48 inches or more, you don't necessarily need this, but the idea is to have a barrier, self-closing gate around the steps that might lead up to that pool to prevent small children from going up there, and that you have a removable ladder on that. And, you know, I mean, is this just Paul's opinion, or is there a legal opinion that would also back this?
My legal opinion is that the international code is very confusing on what constitutes a barrier in the above-ground pool setting, and that was my legal opinion. And that was my legal opinion. As to what Paul wanted to do with that, Paul thought it's best practiced to have the requirement of the fence. So I think Paul could probably come in and speak more to the safety issue and his interpretation of that, but my legal opinion was it's very ambiguous in terms of how it's written to be able to have Paul define for people what it is that they have to do.
Lisa?
So how would this affect existing pools?
Existing pools would be grandfathered in. Anytime we have an ordinance, you are grandfathered in until you go in and change something. So if you went in and potentially put a new cover on, you would have to have a fence. An above-ground pool, if it didn't comply, when they made some change to it, you'd have to comply. I don't think there's any existing pool that Paul was aware of that, and he would have to correct me, but my recollection is there is no existing pool that was allowing the pool structure itself to constitute the surrounding barrier. But there was a question about somebody who was wanting to put one in, and that person did not put one in this year and was looking to do it next year. So I don't think there's anything that's out there right now that would not be in compliance with what the ordinance, if adopted, says.
Okay, you said even if they make changes. So what if someone has a pool, an above-ground pool, and they have a cover on it? And let's say for one reason or another, the cover is destroyed or needs to be replaced. Would this new ordinance apply then?
The above-ground pool is designed, with the ordinance changed, to not allow you to use the sides of the pool as the barrier. The barrier has to be something separate and apart from the structure that's holding the water in for above-ground. And everyone that Paul was aware of in town has a fence, a separate barrier. You're not just considering the four-foot container that's holding the water in to be the barrier. And Paul may be better able to explain this. This was a discussion I had with him about two months ago, and I was not at the planning and zoning, but that's my recollection of what Paul was explaining two months ago of what everything is within our city right now.
Other questions? Tim, has this been before planning and zoning?
He recommended that we pass it. I was not present for the discussion on it, so I don't really have a whole lot to contribute there.
Okay, I get it. Other questions, comments? Christina, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Nay, just because I don't know the ramifications.
Motion passes 4-1.
Maybe we should have Paul come next time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we have that? Christina, have Paul come and explain that.
If he's not available, we can have him type up something.
Okay, next item, item number C, is the AE2S Water Treatment Plant Facility Plan. Gentlemen?
My name is Ben Gilson from AE2S. Working with the city engineering and operating department on completion of the AE2S. Sorry about that. Should I start over? We're working with city operations and engineering staff on completion of the water treatment plant facility plan. Last time I was here in front of you, I gave you an overview, overview, excuse me, of where we were at with the facility plan and projections going forward, and then looked at the alternatives being evaluated and estimated costs on those alternatives. What our objective is this evening is to provide a brief review on some of the stuff I talked over last time and give an update on some items, including source water and project costs as a background getting to our recommended alternative. As part of the facility plan, we used a basis of planning, effort to project forward the treatment demands needed going forward 25 and 50 years. Looked at source water availability. Also developed water quality objectives or our treatment goals and used those to develop alternatives that follow those treatment quantities and treatment goals getting to move forward with. The demand projections, we used past data scaling forward to develop the treatment demand projections. As you can see in the graph there, the lower blue line is the projected average day demand. The higher orange line is the maximum day demand, or those peak days generally in the summer you hit on those hottest days. Getting into the numbers a little bit. Going forward in a 25-year period, puts us in that year 2045. We'd be looking at an average day, sorry, I'll start with current demand is about 1 million gallons per day. With peak demand, around that 2.5 million gallons per day. 25 years out, we're projecting to hit that 1.6 million gallons per day on average, with max day estimated at 4 million gallons a day. And then going out even farther, 50-year timeframe to 2070, we hit 2.2 million and 5.5 million projected for our average day and max day demands. Couple notes in the bottom there. The current plant has a capacity of 2,000 gallons per day. That is a maximum treatment capacity, firm capacity, taking out one treatment train, in this case, a filter reduces that capacity. What we look at doing with the new expanded treatment plant is actually going out to that 2070 timeframe, which would double the size of the existing plant and provide a firm capacity of that 4,000 gallons per minute. So accounting for one treatment train or one filter out of service, whether it be maintenance, normal backwashing activities. We went out that far. Looking at the site, there's limited space available. Going out just a 1,000 GP or 1,000 GPM capacity expansion, and then planning another one in the future would get really restrictive on that current site. And it gets a lot more cost-effective looking at the expansion now instead of breaking into two construction projects spread out, and it would actually take up likely more space going or spreading that out on the treatment system side. On the source water side, city gets water from two aquifers, the Big Sioux Aquifer and the Split Rock Creek Aquifer. Largely, most of the water comes from Split Rock Creek Aquifer. That capacity was evaluated by a separate consultant last time I was here and confirmed that the Split Rock Creek Aquifer has sufficient capacity for our demand projections going out to that 2070 timeframe. The city also has current permitted aquifer withdrawal available that exceeds the demand projections. So you would not need to pursue any additional permitted aquifer withdrawal capacity. Looking at the current wells, in the future, well three, which is just tied into the distribution system, would be looked at connecting that to the water plant influence. All the wells would come to the water plant. And then going out in the demand projections, the current wells are sufficient for today's capacity and for a decent period of time. But to get out to the future full demand projections, there will be additional wells needed. We also looked at regional water supply, had discussions with Sioux Falls, Lewiston Clark, and Minnehaha Community Water Corp. And none of those are a feasible option at this time due to water availabilities or long-term capacity availability. Minnehaha Water, Community Water Corp. had some available short-term water back, though it might have been six months or years, a year ago. That has changed. They've found some additional users taking that source, so that has actually gone away almost completely on that option. Getting into treatment objectives. Four main objectives with this facility plan. We want to meet the Safe Water Drinking Act standards. We want to remove concentrations of radionuclides to the lowest possible level with the treatment technology available. Want to remove iron and manganese levels to at or below the secondary maximum containment levels. And we want to remove total hardness concentrations down to at least 200 milligrams per liter. The existing plant currently achieves those top three, but does not soften the water today. For that hardness concentration goal, looking at comparative surrounding systems, Lewiston Clark's tree-to-water hardness is around the 170 range. Sioux Falls is around 230 to 240, and Minnehaha is around 180 to 190. We are targeting a midpoint of that and looking to reduce the Brandon's water harness from 390 to 200, or about half of the hardness level. In the facility plan, we also conducted an assessment of the existing plant with the operations staff, walked through the plant, looked at both building and equipment condition from the treatment aspect to the electric side, really all this plus mechanical side. I won't go through the items I had up there, but we noted a few areas or handful of areas that could use some improvements to help the existing plant. The full list is included in the facility plan. But overall, the existing plant is in good operating condition. Want to note that. Getting to our alternatives that we evaluated. They're really split into two groups. Alternatives one and two are non-softening alternatives, and alternatives three and four are our softening alternatives. Now, with all the alternatives, we plan on using all of the existing wells. We don't plan on getting rid of any wells. We also plan on eliminating the residual disposal to sewer that currently happens with the existing plant as part of the filter backwash and reclaim process. And then as part of all alternatives, we also plan on a new high-service pump station. That would replace the existing high-service pump station in the existing plant. That is due to that existing pump station is not very easily expanded due to its location in the basement of the existing facility. So alternative one, it was our baseline alternative. That's expanding the existing treatment, doubling the capacity. Alternative two is similar to one. We're expanding existing treatment, but we would also install a WRT process. That's a radium-specific treatment process at well seven, targeting that highest concentration of radionuclides at that well before that water is blended back with the well water to the plant. Alternative three would expand the existing plant and include RO as a softening process or reverse osmosis. And alternative floor, four, excuse me, would also expand the existing treatment plant and include lime softening as the treatment or the softening process. Showing layouts briefly here. On the left side is an aerial view. The red boxes are showing what the expanded area of the building would look like compared to the gray box of the existing building. On the right-hand side, the lightly yellow shaded boxes are the new expanded areas. So this layout is similar to alternatives one and two, and that is because with alternative two, the WRT process would be located in a building out at the well seven site. So the building at the plant site would be the same for both alternatives. In each alternative, we're expanding over the initial or the treatment processes, expanding over the, matching the filters, doubling the capacity there. On the west, the left-hand or the west side would be where the high-service pump station would be located next to the clear well. With this, we're still going to have residuals that needs to be managed from that filter backwash stream. And we plan on doing that in a different dewatering practice so that that filter backwash is dewatered to a higher solids concentration and can be disposed of. It's a small enough amount just from the filter backwash can be disposed of in the dumpster on site right there and picked up and hauled to the landfill. That would reduce pretty much everything that's consistently sent to the sanitary stream. Alternative three, I'll jump back and forth real quick here. You can see the differences in the building side on the aerial image on the left. That expanded red box is the RO area. So that would be the softening process. That would take water after it's treated through the front end or the existing treatment and soften it down. Only a portion of the water goes through the RO system and blends back with the bypass stream to keep what hardness is remaining or to hit that goal of 200 milligrams per liter. So it's essentially half the water goes through the RO system and half bypasses it. This treatment system also has that filter backwash residuals, like I mentioned, which would get dewatered down and planned to be disposed of in a dumpster on site there. The RO process also has a concentrate stream, which is planned to go to the river, discharge to the river there. On current day demand, that concentrate stream from the RO system would be about 100 gallons per minute. Alternative four gets into the lime softening. This, you can see the building expands out quite a bit. We do show it getting into that ball field area. Now, this is preliminary layouts as this would be designed. It could be looked at to see if we can avoid going into that soft or the baseball field there on the park. But this really adds in to solids contact basins for the lime softening process. Similar front-end treatment going through filters, or sorry, filtering would be after the softening there. But the lime softening process adds into that filter backwash residual stream a lime sludge that needs to be handled. Right now, that's planned to go to the landfill, but that would be likely dewatered on site, and then there would be regular loads of lime sludge that needs to be hauled off-site. Getting into estimated project costs. Separate out the water plant expansion costs and the high-service pump station costs so you can better see what the water plant expansion costs more closely represent. That high-service pump station costs, I just caught it before I came over here, that should be the same number all the way across. That alternative three should have the same number on that, 2.17 million. That just wasn't adjusted. These numbers are inflated forward to a $2023 dollar value as a target for the planned construction, final construction of the project. So as you can see, total project costs with alternative one are the lowest. When you get into the softening alternatives, three and four, they end up, I'd say fairly close in terms of the range of the project costs here. Now, these project costs do include the estimated construction costs. They include engineering, admin, and legal costs, and they include a planning level contingency right now of 30%. And getting into estimated annual ONM costs. We broke out the current ONM costs, 1.1 million on top. That is the current water sector ONM, annual ONM. That covers the water treatment, covers the distribution system. That's everything included there. And then we showed separately the energy, chemical, and maintenance costs for each alternative so you can better see what the added ONM would be. Now, these these ONM costs are planned on a, or are estimated on a 20-year operational period. So we took the average flow over 20-year period, which ended up at 1.3 MG. So these are calculated on a slightly higher daily average demand than what is currently seen at the plant. And we did that so you can get a little bit of a look forward into what annual ONM would be. So compared to the existing plant's ONM of 1.1, that alternative one, just expanding the existing plant, is just slightly higher. Not a whole lot more in there, and that's largely just the added energy, chemical, and maintenance that goes with that slightly higher demand. So as I go forward, I want to point out the annual maintenance costs include a planned 30-year replacement cost for new equipment. So that maintenance cost is not just the maintenance you see every year, but it's also the planned equipment replacement spread out over a 30-year period. So when we get to the softening alternatives, So when we get to the softening alternatives, they are real similar in cost as far as annual ONM, but that alternative two has quite a bit higher costs on annual ONM. That's largely in the chemical line item, and that is due to the WRT process because that has a contracted, basically maintenance contract with it on replacement and disposal of that media in the WRT process. With estimated rate impacts, the plant expansion versus the expansion with added treatment or essentially added softening is looking to, just the expansion is looking at $14, $18 increase in rates, and with the added treatment or added softening, that gets up to $26 to $35, and that's a monthly increase. These rates are largely dependent on what the final cost ends up as. That's just using the estimated cost we have today. And it'll be dependent on what the loan duration gets set at and how the rate structure gets developed. So those are, the ranges are, we provide those ranges trying to encompass where they could end up there.
I get a slide. My name's Dell DeBoer. I was with you during the source water study and was the technical lead for that study. And also, I've been providing technical assistance with this study as well. And I just wanted to talk just a few moments about relating what you just heard to what we talked about during the source water study. That source water study concluded that the Split Rock Creek could serve and will serve as a long-term water source for the system, but as that study went on, we understood the need to be able to underestimate the need for treatment for different sources. And so, the treatment alternatives that were evaluated enabled examination of the source adequacy, how much water was available, and what the cost would be. So a very high-level cost estimate was done during that study. And treatment alternatives were then developed to do that, those cost estimates. And the treatment alternatives that were looked at in that study were very similar to the facilities plan, alternatives one, two, and three, with some improvements or better understanding of those alternatives as the facility plan went forward. There was quite an intensive interaction between the study group and the community through the Community Water Development Committee. And during that time, we did some O-evaluations of costs, but also non-cost considerations for each of those alternatives. And out of that came an agreement from the committee and AE2S of this recommendation of using the Split Rock Creek as the aquifer. And the treatment alternative that was recommended at that time was to expand the existing treatment facility, which is occurring through all of the four alternatives that we have here, as well as installing the WRT treatment technology for well number seven to improve the radionuclide removal from that well. And then, the final part of the recommendation was to include the flexibility to add RO in the future in the design of the facility. Since then, more has been learned. The existing treatment process, which is a specific adsorptive technology, the HMO treatment process and the IMR treatment, has been found to be very resilient and meet the, I guess, the goal of treating the water to the best available technology to levels that are less than the detection limit by the state health lab. And so, that was new information that we learned as a part of this. In addition to that, you know, the cost of the WRT project was refined as a part of this. And so, I guess the point of this slide is simply to say that there's some similarity between the outcome of the source water study and the source water study results were included and refined or revamped as a part of the facilities plan.
As Dell mentioned, with taking a deeper look into the treatment plan itself and the expansion alternatives, and concluding or finishing up the alternative review, our recommendation would be to proceed with alternative three, expansion with RO softening. This alternative achieves all of the treatment goals established in the facility plan, reduces that softener salt usage in the individual household. Now, every house can decide if they still want to keep a softener in their house and how they want to use that. This reduces the residue buildup or softening, reduces residue buildup and accumulation in appliances and fixtures. As an environmental impact, reducing that softener salt usage will reduce the softening salt that gets into the wastewater stream and through the wastewater treatment plant and eventually into the Big Sioux River by an estimated 300 tons per year for the city of Brandon. And then, as another benefit, the RO provides a solid membrane barrier for additional radium removal. Now, this is our recommendation. All the alternatives will provide a huge benefit to the city of Brandon. All of them will establish added treatment capacity needed as the city grows. Following the decision on the alternative move forward would be, what's remaining is just finalize the facility plan, develop the implementation strategy on the alternative that's decided to proceed with. Following that, there's an, with that, there's environmental review and a public hearing necessary to complete the facility plan and meet the state requirements. Then we would get into project funding, planning, and of course, design and construction. So with, as we said, that's our recommendation to provide for consideration in your decision. Want to open it now to any questions?
So what's the amount of water loss through the RO process? Because there is some loss. What would that percentage be?
At the current demand right now, it'd be about 100 gallons per day, or gallons per minute, sorry. That percentage, so it's half the water goes through the RO system, and the RO concentrate is about 25% of that. So overall, it's about 12 and a half percent of the water.
And then the RO waste, how do we know for sure that we have a means for that?
We've been talking with the state on discharge requirements for that RO concentrate. There is a permitting process that has to be gone through for that discharge. And so, through the facility plan and that alternative development, we worked with them on preliminary numbers, you know, concentrate, the concentration numbers of different things in the RO concentrate, and wanted to verify we had a likely source to discharge to. On their side, there's no issues meeting that. We're well, actually, really far under any discharge limitations. They are going through a review on the stream designation there, so we even looked at the, what the new designation could possibly be, if it went that route, and we would be under those as well. So from our discussions with the state so far, there's appears to be no issue or concerns with getting that permit approved for discharge to the river.
With the RO system, we don't need the WRT system then?
That's correct.
It'll cover everything?
The main radium removal would actually still be the city's current treatment with the HMO and IMR media and the filters. RO would provide just another benefit on that. Any water going through the RO would remove 90, upper 90-some percent of the radium remaining after the filters.
RO water that's in, that would be put into the pipes that aren't used to having RO water, what kind of consequences are there for that?
We would actually plan on blending it back with the RO bypass stream. Because yes, you don't want to put the RO, pure RO water into the concentrate or into the pipelines. It's a pretty aggressive water at that point. So it'd be blended back with the RO bypass water, that half of the water that doesn't go through the plant, and stabilize, probably take some pH stabilization a little bit, but the target would still be to not drastically change the distribution system water, so we don't, we don't want to see any adverse effects going out in the distribution system. So we'd be targeting the same water going out of the plant that you have now, other than the hardness would be reduced.
Okay, so if we, if we went with alternative one, and then down the road, it was decided by either this panel or someone else later, would we still have the flexibility to add an RO system later on?
Yes, it can be easily set up that way. The RO process goes at the end of the treatment processes, basically between the last treatment and the clear well. So you could plan for that now to be installed in the future. The main thing we'd want to account for is maybe a little bit higher capacity through the front-end treatment than what alternative one shows now to account for that RO concentrate stream. But yes, yes, you could plan for that in the future.
So if we did, did the softening piece of it, the RO or the alternative four, when we're watering our lawns, that's going to be soft water? We can't
Softened water, yes.
Yeah, we can't, like, right now, we don't necessarily run it through the softener.
When this, this isn't, this wouldn't be the same as the water that softened through your water softener at home. It does not have that salt added. So there's, there's no adverse effects from watering your lawns with this water. You know, as you saw, there's Sioux Falls, Minnehawha, Water Community Corp, Lewis and Clark, the surrounding areas all soften their water. You don't have to then, sorry, people can still soften further in their home if they want to. But this, I want to make sure, this isn't the same water as what you'd end up with out of water softener because you're not adding that salt to it that, like you said, you don't usually want to drink that. You wouldn't want to put that on your lawn because then you're just adding softener salt in it to water your lawn.
So you could set it up so the lawn water doesn't go through the softener, is what you're saying? If I kept my softener, if I kept my softener?
That'd be up each individual house, yeah.
Just like it is now, okay. So if we don't go with the softened water, are we going to look backward or, you know, as a community, look backward because we're not doing the softening? Do most communities do the softening when they have the opportunity to set it up that way?
I would say most, most water systems do soften water to some extent. Now, that, what they soften to is a huge range on where they end up, so.
Are most South Dakota communities that soften, soften by RO or lime?
I would Yeah, I would say most of them do lime treatment. You know, it, a lot of it is history, and so, back in the day, RO wasn't very popular or competing as an alternative for treatment. Over the last 20 years, RO has become much more competitive from an, from an energy standpoint because they've created membranes that take less pressure. And so, as a result, the cost of energy to do RO has come down drastically. There's, you know, the other key thing is residuals disposal, is having a place to do that. And so, in some cases where there's not a river nearby that can accommodate that receiving stream, then it's more difficult to go with the RO because you just don't have a place to put it. So in this case, with the capability to discharge into the Big Sioux River, you have that opportunity to go in that direction. It's a difference also with maintenance, you know, and that kind of thing. I would say, you know, in answer to the question of who softens, you know, in the state and so forth, many of the Class A facilities use, many of the Class A towns of the size of Brandon, 10,000 or more do soften their water or have softened water available.
Other questions?
When you say other communities soften their water, where do we fall in the range with our hardness at 390? That seems much higher than most, I'm assuming?
Yes, and so, if you study that, that same range of communities, most of the water that's in South Dakota comes from similar kinds of groundwater formations on the eastern side of the state. You know, and so, that hardness that we mentioned of 390, that's a typical range, 390 to 400 to 450. And so, that's deemed to be pretty hard water, and in the cases of most of these facilities, the nature of the water relative to the use of lime softening enables you to get down to about 200 economically using lime softening. And so, you find a lot of communities that do soften the water in that range of softness, hardness, between, you know, 180 to 250.
So why did
Brookings, Mitchell, Aberdeen, you know, if you think of those same-sized communities that you consider yourself in that range of.
Why did you recommend the RO versus the lime if we're going to go with softening?
And that, that gets into a couple of things Dell mentioned, that the residuals management is a little more difficult or labor-intensive with lime sludge. The operational complexity is just a little simpler, it's simpler, shouldn't say a little simpler, to operate the RO. It's a consistent membrane barrier versus a chemical treatment system. And then, space requirements with that lime softening, it got quite a bit larger on that small site there. Any others?
Okay, I'm sure you've been made aware by the administration that we conducted a survey of our residents, and there was a overwhelming majority of the 1,200 responses that chose non-softening option. So it's going to be a decision for our council to make in the coming weeks with contradicting, kind of contradicting opinions or suggestions on the, on the topic. So our plan is to make a decision next board meeting so we can move forward one way or the other. Correct, Tammy? That's your hope anyhow? So thank you for your presentation, and
Yep.
We'll have a decision next meeting.
Sounds good.
Go ahead, yeah.
So, I notice in the presentation, our water committee recommended basically option two, as I read it, with an option or some flexibility to add the RO later, I'm assuming is what this refers to. Who wants to speak to that?
I certainly can, if you'd like me to.
Okay.
I was a part of the study.
Okay, very good, thank you.
The Water Development Committee looked at the alternatives of, of just the existing treatment facility, expanding that, and then the existing treatment facility plus WRT, and then an RO option. Those were the high-level options they looked at. And understanding the, the range of desires in terms of treated water quality came down on that radium removal is really important. And so, that is, there's a high, high degree of interest in that. Also, there was interest in, in making sure the iron and manganese was removed, so all these treatment facilities do that. And the third interest was, there was interest in softening, but being unsure of the cost and the direction that the community might want to go, wanted to leave the door open to that option. And so, that's why that recommendation from the Water Development Committee included enabling the system to add RO as an option. So to the question of what was the direction of the Water Development Committee, that was the direction at that time.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Thank you.
Can I add to that real quick? That when the Water Development Committee made that recommendation, we did not have the filter media removed and replaced in our water treatment plant. And since we have done some of those upgrades, there's been a lot more radium removal that has come. And so, I think when the Water Development Committee made that recommendation, they were solely worried about that radium. And now, our existing system is taking out more of that on its own.
When did that Water Committee make that recommendation?
So what would be the, so let's say we did alternative two with the option of adding the RO. We know that it would be more expensive in the long term just from a time value standpoint of money. Any idea what that could potentially look like? Know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that would, we could lay it out, as you're saying, similar to what was recommended with the source water study. That would, so it'd look like alternative three, but you'd plan on that RO in the future? And then you'd have the WRT process at well seven. Now, that, that you'd be really hammered then with the treatment on the radionuclides, radionuclide removal, probably more than you would need to, knowing what we know now with that filter media and HMO addition that's removing the radionuclides now.
Maybe you could just do one with RO option.
Yeah, that's what David Ed mentioned, yeah.
Further questions? Hearing none, we will move forward and, like I said previously, we'll have a recommendation at our next meeting. Item number D, or letter D on our agenda coming up next is approval of the 2021 commercial garbage hauler licenses. We have applicants from AOK Sanitary Service, Bulte Sunrise Service, Marv Sanitary Service, RBS Sanitation and Waste Management. If I could have a motion to approve those garbage haulers licenses as presented? Motion is second to approve the garbage hauler licenses as presented. Any questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
Ricky?
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion carries, thank you. Next, letter E, we have the 2021 sewer cleaning licenses. We have applications from three companies, Bender Sewer and Drain, The Comfort Heroes, and Roto Rooter. I'd entertain a motion to approve as presented. Motion is second to approve the sewer cleaning licenses as presented for 2021. Any questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on, the golf course committee reports, we have a management request for proposal recommendation. Andrew?
Yep, as you guys know, we did an RFP for management services as well as à la carte. RFP for different individual items that a company could help us with out of the golf course. We received one from Landscapes Unlimited. The golf committee met on Friday to review that. I think a couple people were interested in pursuing it further, a couple just looking at it were pretty much no on the full management. Discussing the marketing, the price that they offered for the marketing is a little higher than we were hoping for, unfortunately. So I don't know if that makes sense to do that. And then as I outlined in my email this morning, just looking at our O and M for this year, where we've come from last year, and this, this has turned around in 12 months. I would like to see us have three or four years to get some averages for these, to really know where we stand. I don't want to see us do a management right now because it is, it's irreversible, really. If you do management, getting out of management and taking the course back is, is starting from scratch. And I feel like that would be extremely difficult to do. As I said, I feel like we've turned things around this year. Our O and M is positive, we're $83,000 positive currently. And December's our best, best month for selling passes and our expenses are pretty limited in December. So I, I expect that number to be much better at the end of the year. We've taken care of a lot of things we need to, we've gotten our new golf carts in. I feel like people are much more engaged again. I have way more people ask me what they can do to help, how they can get on a committee to help with tournaments or do that kind of thing. And I think that's important. Working with Landscapes this year was awesome. I, I really enjoyed these, those guys. I really appreciate all the help they gave us. But at this time, that's, that's, that's my conclusion. I said in there, I'm a non-voting member of the committee. And just, and just looking at, looking at the numbers and where they are, I feel like we'd just be sending some of our, what we're gaining to a different company when we're still on the hook for all that, all capital improvements. And, and, and maybe, maybe in three years, it's something to revisit. But right now, I just don't think we have the data to think this is, this is the right decision.
Council members who are on the committee?
Yeah, so when we met, I don't think we really were given the direction to come back with yay or nay, I believe, the direction. I think Councilmember David had said that she would like to see the top one or two contenders come before council. And then if the committee needed to meet to kind of help narrow that down, that was where we were going with it. We did come up with some really good questions as a committee on Friday. I think we had about 10 of them that we thought the council would really like to hear the answers to. But when we had left the committee meeting, we had decided that we were going to ask Landscapes to come to the meeting on the 21st so we could hear from them and let them discuss their, their RFP. I think it's a little premature to make a recommendation without, without hearing from them.
Have they, have we not heard from them? I mean, they've been here and given presentations in the past. And this is the only group that put in a bid. I think, I think we've heard from them, my, my personal feeling.
They haven't presented on their RFP that they just submitted. And we haven't asked them any questions on that RFP. Our committee came up with about 10 pretty serious questions.
Others?
I, for one, would like to listen to them or ask, you know, have some questions and plus let the public know. I mean, I, I see this email now, but I think we need to be transparent. And a recommendation now is from Andrew, not the committee. But I think our, our citizens need to be able to have time to come in and voice their opinion one way or the other. So I would, I would recommend deferring it till next meeting and let them propose, let them speak to us, let us ask some questions and hear from the community. This is their taxpayer dollars here. It's not just our little fun money. We got to remember, our citizens are paying for this and we have to be, be conscious of that, of how we're spending their money and what's best for the community. So that would be my recommendation.
I guess from being at that committee, my recommendation is not to move forward. That was what I discussed during that meeting. The questions that Dana was talking about were all her ideas that she had written down. I don't believe it was consensus of the committee to move forward with an interview. I don't believe it was a consensus of the committee on all of the questions. Yeah, they were discussed. I guess my recommendation as a finance officer is it doesn't make sense to move forward with what's presented in the management.
Okay, my question would be that, from me as a citizen and a taxpayer of this community, I would really hope our council would take a look at this. We've done the same old for years and we've, we've, you know, I don't know, what's the definition of sanity rate? It's like the same thing, expecting a different result. And I just feel like I think we owe it to look at or at least hear from them, what they have to say. It's, I, I like the fact that we don't lose ownership of the golf course, but yet if there's a way to make a profit or at least come ahead, we have so many infrastructure needs. I just feel like if there's a way, I don't know, I just, I would like to hear from them. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I would like to at least hear from them. I don't think it hurts to hear their proposal and see what they have to say. I think we owe the community at, at least that.
The questions were definitely not all Dana's. I was more of the note taker. I was, I mean, a question on there is about proprietary data and the software, not my question. Question was on there about leagues, not my question. The question was on there about reciprocating with Keene Park, not my question. So there wasn't a specific consensus, but the questions were all compiled together, read aloud, and the opportunity to add or change was there. But I 100% agree with Councilmember David. Does council agree to move forward with an RFP? And we have a firm that has put in for that RFP. We owe it to them to let them come and talk to us about it.
I, I have to take issue with the fact that we're still doing the same thing over and over again. We have a new management team. Andrew's been in, in charge for a year. And I, I think that we've seen that there were possibly some opportunities that he's taken that weren't taken in the past. We have Kelly on board, he's doing a, I think, an exceptional job, given the, the challenges that last year may have provided. And I agree that we, we need to, with what we have in place here, we need to continue that on and give it a, a few more years, especially with the turnaround that we've seen this year. He's also absolutely correct. When I came to the city back in '08, there had been a discussion about going with the contract with the sheriff's office at that time. And one of the arguments that I made even before I was here was that if you get rid of your, you know, and I'm using the police department as an example, not that I'm advocating that we go with a contract by any stretch of the imagination. You go with a, you, you get rid of your police department, you go with a contract, you find out, you know, two or three years down the road that you don't really like that. And it is cost prohibitive at that point to try to recreate and build a police department from scratch. It may not be as daunting an issue, but you would still have to go through a arduous process to shift from having this management company, going back to operating ourselves. I think we, I think we owed it to Andrew and his team, Kelly, and see where it goes in the next, like I say, three to five years.
And I, I guess, I, I sent this this morning after having the weekend to think about what we discussed on Friday. And I kind of took a backseat and listened a lot, I gave my input on a lot of things. Listen, there's a lot of positives for me personally with Landscapes coming in, a lot. I could have a lot more staff, a lot more help, a lot more support, people like that. I could have a higher career trajectory moving up with them. When I look at the numbers, we're here, we got here because of, of money. I mean, period, that's, that's why we're here. And when I look at it, I just, I, I struggle with that. We, we aren't on, on the path that, that resolves that. So, and, and we did come up with a lot, a lot of questions and, and things like that. Me personally, I've, I've spoken with them a lot, I've heard from them a lot. I know who they are, I know, I know what they're about. But I, I guess, I just, I just think we've taken this to where we, we are right now. And, and I don't know how much farther we need to go because I don't see the, the numbers part changing.
So Andrew, on the, I'm interested in the marketing part, not the overall management of the course. Are you thinking it's just too expensive for what they could give us?
Yeah, that was, that was my initial, initial reaction to it. You know, I was, I was kind of hoping to see something in the 10 to $15,000 range. So I do think that's pretty spendy for just marketing only the golf course. Some of the questions that Dana had were, were mine, definitely. I was concerned about a few different things. If we hired them, for instance, and I know Sioux Falls ran into this issue, how does the transition occur? What are we looking at? What, what is proprietary, they consider proprietary? What do they feel they have ownership of? And that's, that's a tough question for them to, to answer. I know in Sioux Falls, they tried to claim that the customer base was theirs. Well, if we were to go forward with anything, obviously we feel, would, would feel that that customer base and other things, equipment that we're just going to do at least with, would be ours. So some of those, I mean, we had some tough questions for them. I'm not opposed at all of hearing them, to be very honest. I'm just kind of on the fence here. And any, any more information that, that I can glean from, from these folks, I'd be in favor of. But I'm not saying that I'm supporting or not supporting. With the consensus at, at our meeting the other day was that, Andrew, you've, you've made great strides, we love what you've done. So don't, don't, even if we were to go with another management company, I don't know that we can categorically say that we want Andrew to, to stay in place, but it will be a strong recommendation to do so. So have some comfort in that, even if we were to go, you know, with, with them. But say, I'm not, I'm not ready to commit one way or another, but I wouldn't mind hearing more information. So, and I'm, if, if that's the way everyone wants to go, I'm certainly not opposed to hearing from them, asking those questions, getting them here. I just, I just kind of threw out where my, my, my thoughts were at, where I'm at on this, what I think. But I'm, I try to separate out what, what's best for the city, what's best for the golf course, what's best for me personally when looking at it. So I kind of just gravitate towards looking at, all right, what's, what does the dollars and cents make sense to me, I guess? And so that's, that's just, I wanted people to know where I stood and, and not kind of ride the fence, so to speak, like I say, I probably did on Friday.
And I did ask Andrew and Christina for their opinions at that meeting, so.
Trying to move this thing forward, does anybody want to put something in the form of a motion here on this council so we can?
Yeah, I would motion that, or is it, I don't know how to properly say this, defer it to December 21st and have them present. I just, I think that'd be the best, as just our reputation alone, just if we put a RFP, let's hear from the one that submitted an RFP. So I would put a motion that they come to our meeting so we can ask our questions.
Second.
Motion is second to defer and, and invite Landscapes Unlimited to the next meeting to answer questions that, that the council would have at that time? Questions from the council on that motion? Hearing none, Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Nay.
Cole?
Nay.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries four to two. Thank you. Item 9A2, we have a final pay request for flood repair on the golf course in the amount of $9,625 to Landscapes Unlimited. Entertain a motion to approve that pay app?
I'll make the motion approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the pay app to Landscapes Unlimited in the amount of $9,625. Any questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item 9A3, we have a lease agreement for a Cushman hauler machine with TCF Financial. The total lease agreement is amounts to $12,282 over six years. I could have a motion to approve that lease, the formal lease agreement. We've already approved the, the actual leasing of that equipment. Now we're just approving the actual agreement. Entertain a motion?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the actual lease documents with TCF Financial for the Cushman hauler lease. Any questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Under Parks and Rec, we have two pay applications, number four and five, from Beck and Hofer for the pool improvement project. Application number four is for $87,647.15. Application number five is for $205,236.22, so a total of $292,883.37. I'd entertain a motion to approve pay app number four and five.
Second.
Motion is second to approve pay app number four and five as presented. Any questions? Any questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Public Safety, we have a police report and an inspection report and a fire department report for your review. And then under, under C4, we have the hiring of a new police officer by the name of Jesse Thorne at 21:45 an hour. Entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve Jesse Thorne at 21:45 an hour. Any questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C5, we have our 2021 Fire Service Contract Agreement in the amount of O and M amounts to $107,480, and the equipment portion of that contract is $133,790, for a total of For a total fire service contract for 2021. Entertain a motion?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the 2021 Fire Service Contract as presented. Any questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to Administration. D1, we have a COVID Regulations Resolution, number 3230, on the table tonight. I would entertain a motion to approve...
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 3230. Asking Andy, resolution?
Motion is second to approve Resolution 3230. Questions, comments, discussion from the council? Personally, I'm uncomfortable with the, in, what is it? Number two, face coverings to be worn in the city. Every person within the city of Brandon shall wear a face mask. When this was first drafted, that word was "should" wear a face mask. As you look down at number four, no penalty. Although these measures are set forth with the strongest possible recommendation, there's no penalty imposed by the city for noncompliance with these measures. We're making a recommendation, and my personal feeling is the word "should" goes more along the lines of a recommendation as opposed to an order. This is not an ordinance. This is not something that is enforceable. It's not something that's going to necessarily draw police response. I know the city of Sioux Falls, they went with an ordinance, but it was an ordinance without any, any teeth to it. And so essentially, it was a, again, it was a recommendation. I, I could be comfortable if that word is, is "should." I don't, I'm not an anti-masker by any stretch of the imagination, but this is a resolution. It's a recommendation. "Should" is more of a recommendation than "shall." So I would make an amendment, a motion to amend that, just changing that one word from "shall" to "should." Is there a second? I'll declare the motion failed for lack of a second. The amendment motion failed for lack of a second. Back to the original motion. Further comments? Questions, concerns? Jack?
Yes, I think we tried to address some of the concerns of, of the requirement or the enforcement of this. We, the chief was involved in this discussion, and I personally wanted, I'll read this for the record. I wanted a phrase in, well, I guess, excuse me, I won't read it, but I wanted a phrase in there that's more or less a workaround for law enforcement and for businesses, business owners, business managers, that if they have, if we have the mandate in place, someone comes into the business and says, or is asked to put a mask on, and they say, "No, I'm not going to," and the business owner asks them to leave his premises, and they refuse to, well, now they are breaking the law, and it gives the business owner some support from us that says, "Okay, if you're going to break the law, we will call the police if it comes down to that." My hope is that that person that doesn't want to wear a mask in this person's business just turns her out and turns around and walks out. If they refuse, then at least, I feel that having strong wording in the resolution gives, gives our business owners the backing that they need and they are requesting. So with that, I would, I want to leave the "shall" for one, and I feel we did try to work around, do a workaround with, with the chief here and get to some wording that will work for, for everyone.
So where did we, excuse me, where did we come down with the schools? Schools are included in this? They're not accepted or exempted, right? Is that correct?
As of...
I just want to make a comment on, on business owners, because, Jack, I'm not hearing that at all from our local business community as far as needing that, that crutch or that help. In fact, the chamber put something out this afternoon, and I don't know if you guys had a chance to check your emails before the meeting, but they were starting to flood in with comments of, of our local business community asking us to let common sense dictate and let them basically run their, their businesses. I mean, I can, I can read some of these or parts of them. My opinion is no for a mandate. A mask mandate is not going to be enforceable and puts business owners in a very bad situation. Please let each business decide on their own if they want to enforce a mask. As a business owner in Brandon, we do our very best to set up our employees and customers for the safest environment. COVID is no different. We can use the common sense that got us here to continue to give safe environments without being mandated by the city that we love. We have people come in wearing a mask. We put ours on and conduct our business. If they're not, and we feel we want to, we do. And if they're not, we don't feel the need, then we don't. I don't think we need a mandate from the city to oversee common sense. Those who are concerned with wearing masks, we will gladly put one on. Those who are not concerned, we will not. I'm writing in hopes of no mandate. I feel it's personal choice. I have some employees that wear them. I have some that will not. I have customers that wear them. Most are very happy we don't have them. I also feel like the masks are not the answer. Personal hygiene is more important. And then there's a reference similar to what the chart that we were given earlier about other places that have higher levels of infection.
There are. I was not here for the public comment. I would like to speak if possible. I was doing an inspection. I'm going to be here.
I will allow it, ma'am. Come to the microphone. State your name and your address, please.
My name is Amy Kelly. I live at...
Okay, hold, I'm going to stop you there. Jack, Parliament did read your, your email and, per your request, so...
Yeah, because I couldn't be here because I was doing a C-section.
Right. Anything addition to that?
I just wanted to say that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting different results. What got us here is the highest infection rate in the country and perhaps in the world, although we don't know that for sure because it's hard to trust and know the numbers from other countries. But there is no doubt that South Dakota and North Dakota, for more than a month, have had the highest infection rates in the country. So I don't understand this idea that, oh, we're doing fine the way we are. We're not. We're not. We have the highest death rate in the country, according to the New York Times yesterday on Monday, sorry, Sunday. I forget what day it is. I know. It's, it's unbelievable to me that we are not unwilling to do a small thing to save our neighbors. I know how much this sucks. Many of you may know my dad, Tom Kelly. Tom and Julie Kelly lived here for 30 years. He died two months ago, suddenly. Do you have any idea what it's like to hold a funeral during COVID times? It's horrible. I understand that people want it to be normal. I get that. My dad has six siblings, and I have 25 first cousins. I couldn't hug one of them. My grandma couldn't go to my dad's funeral. My sister-in-law was not allowed to because she works for Harvard, the Harvard Department of Public Health, who would not allow her to come to South Dakota because it is the most dangerous place in the world for COVID. I understand that everyone wants life to go back to normal, but it won't until we start stepping forward and leading. I'm asking you guys to lead. As a physician, I have lost patients. Thank God, none from COVID yet, because I'm an obstetrician-gynecologist, and our patients have survived. Not all the babies have. Stillbirths are up a ton than this related to COVID. And when you lose a patient, let me tell you, you never forget any of it for days, weeks, months, years. All you can think about is, what if I would have done this? What if I hadn't done that? And you second guess yourself. I don't want any of you sitting here to have one of your neighbors die of COVID and wonder if you would have passed this mask mandate if it would have saved them. Because you know what? I have to live with that, but I signed up for that. I'm a doctor. You all did not sign up for that, and you shouldn't have to go through it. I'm just asking you to leave. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be rude. I'm just very frustrated.
Thank you for your comments. I hope you appreciate the fact that I allowed you to do this in your...
I so much appreciate it.
Okay.
I do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and we will get back to, as I stated before, this is the time that the council will discuss this, and I'll seek any further comments from the council. So what is, what is our stance going to be when ABC Appliance Shop, which doesn't exist here, but say they did, and, and with this resolution, as it's stated, and they say, yeah, we're not going to wear masks, are we going to take action against the businesses in town that choose not to follow this toothless mandate? Jack?
Well, if they refuse, there's nothing in the resolution that says, you know, a neighbor can call and say, hey, so-and-so, so-and-so business isn't, they're not requiring a mask. Unfortunately, there's, there's nothing in there, and this has been a, a process here so that we don't get to the point where we have to call the police department out on our neighbors. The whole intent of a resolution and this particular one, so we don't get to that point. So isn't, you know, what's the ramifications to that guy if he don't want to comply? Honestly, nothing. But at least the ones that do realize that they can do more and should do more, they have a tool then to allow them to do so, to, to be more restrictive than just so-called sign-on-the-door mask. Masks are recommended or, you know. To me, it, it comes down to, we've, we've got to step forward. We've got to get more people involved in, in flat-out wearing a mask. Personal agendas and, got to be set aside. I've read the, all the emails, and I've had over the last week or so, yeah, I'd say it's probably in the 50/50 range. The, the one business owner that said, well, if a customer comes into my business and he wants me to wear a mask, I will. If he does, if he comes in, he doesn't want a mask, or he isn't wearing a mask, and then I don't wear one. That's, to me, that's very self-serving. He is in it for the business. Whatever, whatever produces the buck. I'm, I'm 100% backing this because I really think we need to step up and put more teeth into what we're doing as a city.
I would, I would ask our business, I would ask our business community to take a leadership position on this and have their employees wearing masks. I think that's step number one, just as we asked our city employees to start wearing masks, and I think that that's a good start.
I, I struggle just going straight from zero to a mandate. I looked back through the direction our city has given on both our webpage and our Facebook page, and short of the one share from the municipal league of the mayoral letter, we've been silent. The only thing that we've done was back in May when we ceased the prior COVID restrictions. So to just go from not telling our community what we think needs to happen, whether it be the, the business leadership, or maybe we need to make phone calls, to just going to a mandate, I feel is very harsh, especially when it's a mandate with no teeth and people aren't going to take seriously. I mean, I, I was thinking today, well, how does a dentist work into this? Well, it's written in that he would probably fit into that category where he can't effectively do his job wearing a mask. So if he can make his own decisions, you know, why can't, why can't another business owner? You know, if you were to ask me a couple months ago, I hardly knew anyone that had COVID, and now I know a ton. I know a ton of people that have had COVID. And I sat on one of the phone calls that, that came in on speakerphone where the Department of Health gave the all-clear and said, "This person is now immune for 90 days. You can't pass it on. You can't contract it. Oh, but we'd still like you to wear a mask." Ask them why. Because, because if all of these efforts are, were for the COVID pandemic, there is no why. The why that was given was, well, it will still help prevent colds and other flus. So then where does it end? You know, is, is this council going to be on the hot seat next year if the flu vaccine is the wrong strain? Are we going to be asked to be masking up again? I don't know. I think if anything, my stance on this would be, if we have a unified direction, then let's give that direction to our community. And then if our community doesn't step up, we can look at a mandate. But we're just going from zero to a mandate. After nine months of dealing with this, we don't even know if our state's going to renew their declaration of whatever it's called.
And again, for me, it's, it's part of semantics. What, what part of this is mandatory? It's a resolution. It's a strong recommendation, and, and there's, if you don't have the power of enforcement behind something, all it is is a strong recommendation. And we call it a mandate. In reality, it's not a mandate. It's a, it's a, a strong suggestion to do this. And I don't have a problem with that. I, you know, if a business requires me to wear a mask, I wear a mask. If a business suggests I wear a mask, I wear a mask. And oftentimes anymore, just to keep people happy, I just wear a mask when I go into a business. But there's nothing mandatory about it. We can call it something that it's not. This is, this, this is a resolution. This is us saying and asking and pleading with the people, please wear a mask. Please wear a mask. Businesses can say, you know, it is the power of the business. They, they can say, "We will not serve you unless you wear a mask." And I support that. This doesn't, this just doesn't do it. It's, it's, it's an empty threat, and, and there is no threat there. It's, you, you call it a mandate, it's not a mandate. It's a resolution, and it's our, it's our desire that people wear a mask when they, when they're going into businesses, and I don't have a problem with that. But calling something that it's not is, that's where I kind of have a little bit of an issue with it, obviously. Are there comments from the council? Vicky, Dave, or Vicky, Tim? Any comments, questions?
I agree with you.
I agree with Vicki. You what?
He agrees with you.
He agrees with you.
For what?
I called the question.
Christina, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Fail.
Mass mandate mo- uh, resolution would fail four to, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Requested on the agenda next, next two weeks, life changes quickly.
Been requested to have it, Christina, on the next agenda by Councilmember Fish. You want a resolution on the next agenda, is that it?
I didn't say I wanted it.
Oh, 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 I, I didn't, I thought you did.
Jack wanted it.
Oh, I thought you were saying you wanted it.
No, I'm saying if you want.
Yes, I would like it on the next agenda, the same resolution.
Sorry.
Yeah, I didn't, I misunderstood, I guess, too. Item D two is, uh, kind of an information-only, uh, const- it's, uh, some feedback from our South Dakota Municipal League representatives on Constitutional Amendment A and Initiative Measure Number Twenty-Six with the marijuana laws and whatnot. It's basically just information purposes for us as a council. I don't think we need to discuss anything unless council members have a huge desire to talk about that right now. There's a lot of ifs and whens and buts on this whole topic that'll need to be he- ironed out before we even have a chance to discuss it. So with that, I'd move on to D three, uh, a list of surplus property as outlined by the administration to be auctioned off at Interstate Auctions on December ninth. Uh, quite a list of, uh, properties, six vehicles, tanks, so on and so forth. Storage tanks. Not, not Army tanks. Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the list of surplus property as presented.
Motion second.
Motion second to approve the list of surplus property as presented to be auctioned off with Interstate Auctions on December ninth. Any questions? Christina.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries.
Item D four, we have the first reading of Ordinance Six Twenty, which is, uh, some twenty-twenty budget amendments, uh, pertaining to the Rushmore Project, some legal fees associated with the franchise agreement, cable franchise agreements, development foundation flow-through funds, and the fire department's COVID relief funds. I'd entertain a motion to approve the twen-
Second.
Motion second to approve the twenty-twenty budget amendment as presented. Any questions? Christina.
Clark? Aye. David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Under Streets, we have, uh, a work report and then item number two, Resolution Thirty-Dash Twenty, setting the transit fees for twenty-twenty-one, increasing those to two dollars per trip. Entertain a motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion second to approve the transit fees for twenty-twenty-one as presented, basically two dollars per trip with, uh, those over, is it sixty-five, Christina? No charge?
Uh, sixty.
Sixty, over sixty. Any questions from the council?
Yes, I, I am not in favor of this and I know it's very miniscule, but a wise old gentleman once told me, "Why, why do seniors get discounts?" And since I'm in that category now, I understand that many of them on our fixed income and I understand that and more power to them. But our young people are paying a lot of money for daycare and transportation and it's a great service, but I, I, I just think that, you know, let, let's treat everybody equal and not take it out on the young people.
I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that wise man was your father.
He was a tailor.
Very good. Any other comments, questions, concerns from the council?
You want to amend that?
No. No, I think, I mean, I'm fine with the seniors getting it, I just don't wanna jump in on the young people.
Hearing none, Christina, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion passes four to two. Item E three is, uh, Resolution Thirty-One Dash Twenty, which is a authorization to approve for a, a bridge improvement grant application. McCarty Park Bridge costing about, we're estimating about two-hundred-seventeen thousand and this is approval to approve a grant application to help pay for that, that project in the amount of eighty percent, I believe. Eighty-twenty.
Yep.
I entertain a motion to approve that grant application.
Moving forward.
Second.
Motion second to approve the bridge improvement grant application through Resolution Thirty-One Dash Twenty. Any questions? Christina.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries, thank you.
Item F underwater and sewer, we have the twenty-twenty-one utility rates as presented by the administration. Uh, Christina, do you wanna review those?
As you can. Um, just like to look at utility rates on an annual basis to see where we're at. Um, projects change kind of constantly on when those are and when, when those will be, so kinda look at just, projections are based off what we know today for O and M, um, the projects and the debt. First one would be sewer. Um, a couple of years ago, we did have a resolution that was approved that actually, um, approved the rate increase for four years, and that was fifteen percent for four years. Since then, there have been some projects that have changed, some that have been delayed, some that have been pushed back, um, some that, um, we don't feel they're gonna be done the next five years. So I did look at that, plugged it into a nice Excel spreadsheet that we do have now for utility rates, and I do feel that we can actually bring that increase down on the sewer side. Um, instead of doing the fifteen percent, um, I'd like to bring it down to five percent. So it'll be five percent base, five percent volumetric on that. The average resident would see about three dollars and eighty-six, um, cents on their increase in their water bill, that would be for six thousand gallons, um, whereas the original fifteen percent would've been eleven sixty-four. Um, it's all for discussion tonight, um, just wanna get feedback before we, um, create Um, the surcharge would stay the same for-
Sewer increase looks appropriate to me, uh, so I would agree, agree with it, yes.
No change on the sewer surcharge, that'll stay three ninety-five on that. Water rates, um, same thing for the water rates, just kinda looked at, um, where we're at, where we're at for projects on their, um, O and M. I do have, um, in the packet, doing three percent base and then between six and ten percent on volumetric because we do have a tiered system there. Um, I did look at it over the weekend, um, as Mayor asked me to. Um, if, we've talked a little bit, too, I think he's comfortable if we go, and I'm comfortable with, if you wanna go zero percent base and like a five percent, um, for tier one and two, um, for the volumetric, if you're more comfortable doing that for the water. Would not go much more than that, um, just based off future O and M and projects.
Did some in-depth analysis of that and asked Christina to run some numbers and it really, really looked like to me, folks, that we can keep that base rate at a zero percent increase in the volumetric. Uh, you have all those tiers and stuff, so I'm probably gonna misspeak, please correct me.
Sure.
Tier one and two, five percent increase?
Correct.
Three and four, like?
Um, you know, if you can keep it, what I have projected, three would be nine percent, tier four would be ten. You know, if you wanted to just go one percent lower on all of those tiers than I, than I have presented in the packet, we certainly could do that.
And Mayor, you feel that the, the cash base, the surplus would be adequate?
I think it is, proves a, a good management of the surplus there. The, and actually lowering the base to zero percent, uh, just is a, about a thirteen-thousand-dollar decrease per year, would think, so it's relatively, I'm gonna say relatively minimal. Everything is, money's money, so it's, it's, uh, it's a number and you compound thirteen-thousand over a number of years. It, it's a, it's a real number, but I think it's very doable with our existing fund balance, balance and our projected fund balance. I'd just like to see us get to that point.
If you're comfortable with it and Christina's talking about it.
I looked at revenue projections for this ti- year or two and they are coming in. They will come in over budget, you know, we budgeted one-point-seven-five million. I'm thinking they're gonna be closer to the one-nine. Um, I think a lot of that's due to the weather, the dry weather we had this year, and a lot of that is, um, not necessarily knowing where there's, this tiered structure is going to go and, um, how much that, um, how much revenue we can bring in for that or kind of the offset on that, on that tier three and four, you know, with the sprinkling helps, so.
So what did you, on the sprinkling, did you put any increase in there for next year?
Yeah.
Cause I, I think our water conservation efforts are seeing some positive results and people are not using so much water, which is great.
Which is great.
But then that would affect this.
I do have in here on your packet, ten percent for sprinkler accounts and then ten percent on that top tier, which is usually your sprinklers.
There were a lot of dry lawns around my place this year.
There was.
And I think that's good. So I like that.
And, uh, it was an exceptional year for dryness. I mean, we went from rain every day to me stating publicly that I don't think it's gonna rain for the rest of our lives. Uh, and I think I still kinda stand by that. I'm not sure it is, it is gonna rain for the rest of our lives. But, uh, so it was a dramatic thing and that's part of the management of the fund balance. We don't know what our, our revenues are gonna be for sure. We do the best we can to project them and it just looks like with our current fund balance that we could maintain that base, which I, I'm very firm that base is a, is a big deal to our residents. I mean, it keeps that, just that core piece as low as we possibly can. And then the people who utilize it, we're increasing that.
I guess I would just say, I'm fine with trying that for a year, but if our water usage in the upper tiers continues to decrease, then we may have to make a change.
Correct.
But that's just something to look at.
It's an annual review, no doubt.
Yep, we'll continue to look at it.
Streetlights, Christina?
Streetlights, um, I do recommend, uh, increasing a dollar to six dollars per month for the single-family residential and then we have a formula we have for those that have units. Um, we are getting drastically low on our fund balance in there due to the Core Area Project this year, um, to add lights and just to make some changes there. Driving down them last night, I think that there was some really good improvements that we've made in our older area of town to just add some more light and security in that. Um, it was forty, about forty-one thousand to add those. We're gonna do the Rushmore Project next year and then we'll plan on doing like Core Phase Two the following year. And then it just offsets the utility rates that we get charged from Sioux Valley and Excel and the percentage increases that they've had. We haven't increased the rate since twenty-sixteen, so it just kinda helps offset those, any rate increases that we've seen from them as well.
That was my kicker on the whole situation when, uh, I saw that we have not increased the rate of that, uh, streetlight since twenty-sixteen when we implemented this streetlight thing. And we do, are paying, uh, some, some substantial money out to improve our streetlight. Yeah, it's in certain areas of town, but that all comes back to everybody at some point. Uh, you gotta start somewhere, so I think it's, it's a good, uh, good start with the dollar increase there and trying to keep them as minimal as we possibly can. Comments, questions from the council? These are for review purposes only tonight, will formally approve next meeting.
Yep, we'll bring forward the resolutions next meeting for you.
Hearing none, we'll move on to item F two, water meter replacement bids. We had a bid from Ferguson Water Works for fifty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-three dollars and eighty cents, which is labor only to install our water meters. The actual cost of the meters is another hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, but this is approving the bid from Ferguson to install these, the labor for that, for fifty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-three dollars. I'd entertain a motion. Motion second to approve the low bid from Ferguson Water Works for fifty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-three dollars. Any questions? Christina?
I would just, just add that, uh, we'll work with Ferguson here over the next month and I'll, we're looking at mid-February, but, um, as time goes along, I'll give you more of an update on what that process will be and when they'll be here.
Okay. Call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item F three, we have, uh, results of our water tower bid. We received two bids. The low bid is from AB Contracting for five million, four-hundred-seventy-six thousand, four-hundred-sixty-nine dollars. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve low bid from AB Contracting for five million, four-hundred-seventy-six thousand, four-hundred-sixty-eight dollars and seventy cents. Any questions? Hearing none, Christina, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Carrying forward that, relationship with that, we have a, next item on our agenda is to approve the construction administration on that water tower project with stockwell engineers in the amount of three-hundred-seventy-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. Entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion second to approve the construction management on the water tower project with stockwell engineers for three-hundred-seventy-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. Any questions? Hearing none, Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries, very good. Any new business from council?
Um, I just reminded my, we do have a meeting on Thursday night for the Park CIP. And then I did send out an email about the tour on December twenty-ninth. I haven't heard back from some of you. If it works, let me know. Otherwise, we'll plan on a tour on that twenty-ninth at ten.
Very good.
Work out logistics later and send it out, but-
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, having come to the end of our meeting, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion second.
Motion to adjourn at eight oh seven PM. All, or Christina, gotta call the roll, I guess.
Yeah, Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Of course.
I would hope the days of Chuck Parsons declining to adjourn a meeting would be gone. Uh, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.